And delay on the broadcast and stream. If you wish to download the presentation materials or wish to comment and need to see the visual in real time, please visit EverettLaw.gov/PlanningCommission. I would like to remind anyone participating to please mute your microphone by pressing star six until called upon. Thank you for your patience and understanding. We know these are challenging times and appreciate your willingness to be transparent, to continue to reach out to our community, and keep everyone informed as we navigate through this time. With that, I will ask commissioners if you've had an opportunity to review the minutes from our last meeting, which was way back in November, and if there are any comments or suggested changes to be made. If there are none, is there a motion to approve?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes.
Was that Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. A second?
I'll second that, Commissioner Lavra.
Commissioner Lavra, okay. Kathy, let's have a vote.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck? Oh, excuse me, she's not here. Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Cheryana Thack?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move into member reports, maybe I'll take a brief moment to recognize that the composition of our commission has changed a little bit. Take a moment to acknowledge that Commissioner Tisdale did meet the end of his term, and we thank him for his years of service and wish him the best of success moving forward in other endeavors. And we welcome Commissioner Finch back to the commission, this time as a regular voting member of the commission, so welcome back Commissioner Finch. And also want to acknowledge and welcome our newest commissioner, Charles Atkins. So, Mr. Atkins, welcome. We look forward to having you with us for this year. With that, any other members have anything to report? Okay. Hearing nothing, let's go to staff, and we do have some, I guess, maybe introductions to make here as well. Is it Todd? Todd Hall, are you on the line?
Yes, hello. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you and welcome.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name's Todd Hall. I'm one of the two contracted planners with LDC. I'm, in my official role, I'm the planning manager for LDC. We're a consulting firm in Woodinville, just down the road, and my colleague Clay White, who some of you may know, in the past, he was the former Planning Director, Community Development Director for Snohomish County for a number of years. And both Clay and I are currently assisting the planning department staff as they go through a transition period since Alan Giffen and Dave Stahlheim have since left the city. So, I'm just glad to be helping out and looking forward to participating with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I think with that, we have three items on the agenda today. The first item is our annual election of officers. And being a new year, it's our opportunity to nominate and vote for a new, I believe it's just the Chair and Vice Chair positions.
That's correct.
So I would open it up to the floor if there's any comments or nominations.
I would like to make a nomination.
Is that Commissioner Lavra?
Yes, yes. I, I think Adam's been doing a great job as Chair, and I'd like to nominate him for that position this year as well.
I see Commissioner Zalinski. Do you have your hand raised?
Yes, Cheryana Thack. Commissioner Lavra basically took my thunder, because I was going to say the same thing and nominate you to continue, if you're willing to do that. I think he's done a fine job under these challenging conditions.
Well, thank you. I, I am willing to continue, but I certainly, if there's other nominations, certainly entertain that as well.
This is Commissioner McGinn. I would make a motion to nominate, or to vote that we, I'm losing my train of thought, but I agree and I make a motion that we would vote on it.
Okay, so it sounds like there were, there was a nomination. Thank you, and I guess that's, I take that as a motion to, for a vote. We have a second on a motion to vote.
I'll second that.
Kathy, if you can call through.
Sure will. Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Cheryana Thack?
I'll abstain.
All righty. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And then we do have an opportunity for, I need to appoint a Vice Chair position as well. Do we have any discussion or nominations? Mr. Zalinski, I see your hand still raised. I don't know if that's from last time or...
Thank you, Cheryana Thack. I would like to continue the theme of moving forward with our wonderful Chair and Vice Chair from last year, and so I will nominate Commissioner Lavra to continue as Vice Chair if she is willing to do that.
Well, I was hoping to let someone else have that honor. I would do it if, if no one else wants to.
Any other discussion or nominations? If there's no, if there's no further discussion or nominations, we could, perhaps someone want to move, move to a, move to a vote? Commissioner Lavra, did you want to say something?
Well, I, yeah, I, I had thought to ask Commissioner McGinn if she was interested in the position.
Commissioner McGinn, are you interested, would you be interested, would you accept the nomination if made?
I, I would accept a nomination if made, yes. Thank you, Christine.
I, okay, I would like to withdraw my name and nominate Commissioner McGinn.
Okay, Commissioner McGinn is nominated. Any additional discussion on that?
Hi, Cheryana Thack, Commissioner Holland here. I would second that nomination.
Okay. How about a, how about a motion for a vote?
Move to vote.
Mr. Finch, a second on that?
I'll second that. This is Commissioner Zalinski.
Okay, let, let go on that. Kathy, if you could call through the roll.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Cheryana Thack?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody. That will conclude item one on the, on the agenda then, unless anyone else has any additional comments or anything else to add. Item two on the agenda is project update on the Rethink Housing Action Plan, and I believe we have Becky McCreary with us.
Oh, good afternoon, Commissioners. Becky McCreary, Housing and Community Development Program Manager for the city. And I'm here tonight, I'm going to share my screen here, but I'm here tonight just to give you an update on where we are with our housing action plan process, and share a little bit about our engagement activities that we've done so far. So, here we go. Can you all see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay. It is February 2nd, so yes, this is your update on the Housing Action Plan project. I just wanted to remind everybody of the vision that we're working on in this action plan, and that is housing for everyone as we work to align our policies, resources to meet our housing vision, and obviously, people experiencing homelessness have a variety of temporary and permanent housing options. So the overall goal of the action plan is to promote greater housing diversity, affordability, and access to opportunity for all income levels. And then we, I've showed this before, but just sort of the, the process of, that we're in right now is reviewing policies, programs, funding, regulations, as they relate to housing in the city of Everett, and to make sure we identify ways to encourage construction of both affordable and market rate housing, and greater variety types, densities, and cost levels. Priorities should be informed by a housing need assessment. We have completed a draft of that. We hope to share some additional materials here coming up in the next few weeks. And then where we are today is really working to get input from the community and stakeholders. Part of this action plan will be a strong implementation, or included in this plan is a strong implementation and monitoring plan, to see how we're doing as we move forward with strategies. So as you recall, we did a startup, and we're getting ready to launch our community survey. We're going to be targeting, targeting a number of different groups and folks and stakeholders in this process. We wanted to, we held off on releasing that survey just because we wanted to do our first outreach activities, and then, so we're getting ready to finalize that survey and get that out. So we'll make sure that you get a copy of that when it's released. As some of you might have attended our virtual forums that we've had, we've had one, and I'll talk, I'll do a recap of that. We've been doing a series of community chat events. I'm really excited to share our experience with that. We've been updating council, I did that last week, and then of course, we are also committed to making sure the planning commission stays updated. So I won't go through all of this, but this is the full schedule of our outreach. What I wanted to mention to you tonight was that initially our grant, our, from Commerce required us to complete this process by the end of June. I think Commerce recognizes just the challenges of trying to do public engagement in a new way, and so they are open to allowing us a couple of extra months to get this work done, which I think will be necessary just as we roll out the plan and want to continue to engage with the community. So, we're in discussions with Commerce now about extending that deadline till the end of September. We certainly don't want to drag the process out, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're communicating with the community as we move forward. So the recap of the first housing forum, it really was about what's missing. If you had an opportunity to listen into that, you heard former Governor Gregwire kind of talk primarily about the region's housing crisis, focusing on the housing gap really for the middle income households, with acknowledgement that there is a shortage of housing for all income levels. And while she did, the data that she did provide was primarily about King County, I think there's a lot of parallels and circumstances that mirror housing here in Snohomish County and Everett. One of those is the, sort of the changing demographic that Everett has had over the past 20 years, which is moving toward a non-family, non-family households. That means there's less households with children, and how does that impact the dynamic of a community? We definitely have housing affordability challenges, and we also are limited in the choices of housing that is here in the community. And then finally, just talking about some of the folks that fit that middle income household level that may have a hard time finding housing in Everett, they may work here but not able to live here, and you can see that list there. So the, we held actually two community chats, but we're calling it Community Chat Number One, because they were identical in terms of the information that we were asking. We asked them to acknowledge the shared value, and then just understand the need for change, including more housing options and choices, also understanding the limited vacant land that's available here in Everett. And also recognition that changes may be appropriate in some locations and may not be in others. We heard that there was a need to ensure complete and healthy communities, and that, again, acknowledgement of that affordability challenges across income levels. There was discussion that that first one chat about design versus density, the importance of design, even if you're increasing density, and then just to remember that we're planning for future community members as well. So we did a polling, and I just wanted to share the two results from, from the two different meetings, which we asked them about that shared value, community value, and you could see that most everybody agreed or strongly agreed that housing for all was a shared value. Then we asked folks, what kinds of housing do you think the city needs to accommodate housing opportunities for everyone? And that includes both rental and housing. And so you can see probably the least amount of votes were about more new single-family homes, but recognizing that the other types of housing are opportunities for, one, in getting more affordable housing, and two, just, just the housing types and potential ownership opportunities. And then finally, which we like to do is, is our word collage. We asked people, what is the most important quality or feature in the community related to housing growth in Everett? And you can see both groups did, the larger the word, the more times it was used. Affordability was really number one. Again, talking about density, making sure we have walkability. Equity is another important answer that we received. Ownership, capacity, so that memorializes sort of the, some of the conversations that we had with the community. So I wanted to just give a little bit of information. We're still sort of putting that, that stuff together in a written summary that we'll be able to provide to you, but we did have breakout rooms and the discussions were about issues related to high density multifamily development, making sure that those maybe were in more commercial type areas and/or near transit and arterials. I also should mention that we did receive many comments from the participants that they felt that the, the virtual participation was a positive thing, because they were able to access public meetings where they might not have been able to get out and get to a meeting, so that was good feedback. We did hear a lot about the density in single-family zones and the different housing types. I would say a lot of that, again, was focused in around design, looking at transition areas into single-family homes, because wanting to preserve the, the charm in the neighborhood of those single-family zones, but acknowledging that other housing types such as townhomes, condominiums, we heard a lot about tiny houses. And then I think in both sessions, we heard an awful lot about accessory dwelling units, and what we could do to incentivize them, to make them fit. I know in the past, we've heard that a lot of issues with, with ADUs is maybe the, the parking situation. So I, I think we heard it on both sides, where now parking isn't a big deal, and then on the other hand, it is. There was a lot of discussion about homeless housing, and I hope that you all get a chance to listen to our forum next week. It is during the day, and we will be talking about homeless housing, and just other solutions for, for housing, both temporary and permanent. There was a recognition that community, there's a community resistance to change, particularly in the single-family areas. We didn't have a lot of participation, and maybe not from folks that live in single-family areas, so we are going to be adding some targeted outreach efforts to some of those neighborhoods, to make sure that, that they know the discussions that we're having and potential changes. Excuse me. There was talk about incentives, and I guess I would reiterate that we did generally hear that there wasn't really a lot of support for trying to figure out where to put new single-family housing, and obviously affordability. So, moving forward, I, we won't be back to you until May, so we'll be through a lot of our community outreach sessions and our forums. We do have housing, a couple of, well, several housing committee meetings, and there are three planning commissioners that are serving on that committee as your representative. We are going to be going to the Diversity Board, that's another area where we're having a little bit of struggle trying to get diverse communities involved in this conversation. We did go to the Council of Neighborhoods. We'll be going to the Connect Casino Road community, and we haven't determined when that's going to be. And then we will be doing a developer specific forum follow-up, which hasn't been scheduled So just again, through November and March, and some of these items might move if we do get a, an extension from Commerce, but we'll continue to keep working on our policy framework and strategies, synthesizing the comments that we hear from the public. And then April through June, as I mentioned, that'll probably slide again, so that we have an opportunity to, one, do some more public engagement, and two, potentially needing more time with, with the council to go through a recommended housing action plan. So with that, that's just really an, an update, and I'm happy to take any questions, or also would love to get any feedback.
Thank you, Becky. Will open up for any commissioners with questions? Commissioner Lavra and Commissioner Finch?
Yeah, I think I had to stand up first.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Lavra, go ahead.
Oh, I just was curious, which commissioners are on the, the housing committee? Maybe I missed that in the past.
It's Commissioner Finch, Commissioner McGinn, and Commissioner Lark.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Finch, you had a question or comment?
I do, yes, thanks. And thank you for the overview, Mr. McCreary. Can you give a sense of who the attendees were for the chat sessions? I wasn't able to attend either one of those, but I think part of understanding the, the feedback you received during those sessions is also understanding who provided that feedback.
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, we had generally community members. I think we probably had a few members from the building industry that did attend. I would say that there were some homeless housing advocates that attended, so that's probably why we saw a lot of those types of comments. But in general, my sense was it was, it was just community, community members.
And, and are you keeping track of kind of the number of participants and the demographic and the kind of the stakeholder status that they might have?
Yeah, it's, it's harder to do the, kind of keep the demographics, but the number, and then in general, you know, who's participating, so yes.
Okay, that's great. And how many distinct participants did you have over the two chat sessions?
The first one wasn't very well attended. There was probably 10 folks there, which honestly was helpful, because it was our first one. We were trying to get our bearings with it, but, and we had about 25 participants in the second one.
Okay, that's great. I mean, I think it's, it's helpful that you are doing the same chat session twice, once in the day and once in the evening, so I think that's great. Are the recordings of the chat sessions going to be made available online? I see that, I mean, I, I watched the Christine Gregwire's recording online, but I wasn't able to find the chat sessions.
The chat sessions aren't recorded, so they would be similar to like if we went out and did a workshop or open house. Because we go into breakout rooms, it's not feasible to, to record, so we're taking notes. So each breakout room had a staff person who was taking down all of the comments and the notes from folks, so we, we are summarizing those and we will be putting those online.
Got it, okay, all right. I mean, you may consider exploring a different platform where you can record in different breakout rooms. And I guess the last comment I would have is, I would encourage whoever makes these decisions to prioritize the developer forum, and ensure that the developers that are participating represent a cross-section of housing developers, not just not-for-profit and subsidized housing developers, but also market rate developers, both within Everett and Snohomish County, but also that are active in adjacent counties.
Yeah, thank you, and I think we did, that's a great suggestion. We, I know their master builders did show up for that second chat.
That's great. Thank you.
Any other commissioners with questions for Becky? Commissioner Lavra, did I see your hand again?
Sorry. I saw Carly's went up at the same time, but I just... I just wanted to be able to direct people who mentioned the subject to if we go, if they go to rethink housing on the website, would they be able to see the results of these chats or the schedule for um, making part in any of these um, meetings?
Yes, um, the links to the chats and the forums are on the website. We are summarizing the chat sessions and that material, we'll also get up onto the web, website shortly. As well as um, the survey, pushing out that survey, it should be, we hope by the end of the week.
Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner McGinn, did you have your hand up as well?
Uh, I did, thank you, um, I, I just want to say thank you for the work that went into pulling this uh, together, the, both the uh, forums and the chat sessions, um, I, I did notice and I wanted to bring up um, when I attended the last chat session, um, I, I struggled a little bit with the online virtual format, um, when I was divided into a breakout session, it was uh, me and one other person, um, the person who was responsible for um, organizing it, and I think I think he might have been struggling with some of the, um, with whatever interface was being used, uh, it was like a sticky note type program. Um, and so that made it, that made it really a little bit challenging for us to have a discussion together. Um, I also wondered if uh, maybe in the next uh, chat session we could be divided into um larger groups, um, maybe more than just two people, because I did feel like it was, you know, it was just a conversation between the two of us, really. Um, I think if you're able to extend the program period out until fall, um, like you think you might be able to. I'm wondering if there would be any opportunity to do um, in-person chat sessions at some point. I, I know the virtual format does, uh, it's, it's more inclusive, but I, I do think that meeting in person um, for this kind of activity, it's really helpful.
Um, yeah, thank you for those comments, I think you attended the first one where we were sort of working out our, our bugs. Um, and so I appreciate that, um, and I think we solved a couple of those issues in the second chat, so uh, as far as an in-person um, session, I guess we'll just have to wait and, and see what happens as we move forward and if things are able to open up, I agree, it's, it's fun to get together and useful in-person as well. Okay, thanks.
Any other commissioners with questions? Kathy, has there anybody, any members of the public uh, indicated a desire in advance to um, speak on this topic?
Uh, no, but I do have a couple guests here, um and I could call on them to see if they, they wanna provide any input.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that, do that now.
Okay, we have uh, Kami from Snohomish County Cameno Association of Realtors. Would you like to speak?
Oh, looks like she's saying no, no thank you, so.
Okay, uh, Mary Cunningham.
Hi, this is Mary, um. I think it would be great if you could do a public notice, a mailing notice to all single-family homeowners who may be affected by transit zoning. Um, I think most people don't have a clue what's going on, um. They're working right now to maintain their households. Putting their, getting their kids through school, working from home. And they don't have time to deal with planning commission in the evenings. Um, and I just think they don't have a clue what's going on, I've talked to several of my neighbors and they never heard of any potential changes. And so, yes, I um I suggest that the survey um, that you're talking about, that all residents in potential transit areas be notified. That it really be mailed to all property owners in those areas. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
We have Mr. Harris.
Good evening commissioners, um, it is Victor Harris, I am a resident at thirty seventeen Lombard. And I throw that out particularly because this is a multifamily residence, senior living for about two hundred people. For those of you that know me, um, of course, I've been involved in this for, for many, many years. When we start talking about questions of single-family neighborhoods, preserving single-family neighborhoods and residents of single-family housing not commenting. I, I just urge caution that we don't take that as a negative, that it doesn't matter, the big conversation for the last what, fifteen years has been, how do we preserve single-family neighborhoods? How do we do this? Or do we just say, okay, this is the twenty-first century, we'll just demolish everything from Everett Avenue north to the hospital and turn it into high-rise apartments. I, I think that's unrealistic, but it's the idea that once we start carving up we start losing that identity of what a single-family neighborhood is supposed to be and look like, thank you.
Thank you.
Those are all the guests that I have listed.
Okay, thank you everybody, uh, maybe go back to commissioners, any, any uh, final uh, thoughts or questions, Commissioner Zalinski?
Uh, yes, thanks Chair Yanasek, um, the issue of accessory dwelling units is one that's kind of continuing interest to me, I mean, that idea was raised, I don't know, maybe fifteen years ago or more as a way to sensitively introduce additional carrying capacity to single-family neighborhoods. And I know the city of Everett has allowed them for several years, I myself added one to our house about twenty years ago. Um, which I'm no longer living in, but I'm just curious about the city's experience and if you haven't uh, developed any data on that yet, Becky, I would advise you to try to do that if you can. Uh, just see how many units we've got, you know, what if you know, or if the staff has any ideas as to why more units haven't been built, what the obstacles are to that, that kind of thing, I think it would be useful to put together some information on that if you haven't already done, so.
Thank you, Michael, yeah, that is something that we're, that we're doing, we're looking into.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
Yeah, Chair Yanasek, it's Commissioner Holland, uh, question, I guess, or comment. So Becky, I'm curious if there's uh, any platform where we can just kind of keep something open for twenty-four hours with different questions, things like that where folks can log on, you know, virtually any time during the day to get some feedback on some of these tough questions and I, I've just found that it's worked better, at least in Marysville recently, um, where, you know, some folks have difficulty speaking up and whether it's even in person or online or in, in these uh, you know, Zoom or uh, Teams meetings and things like that to uh, try to get a better uh, feel of what the community thinks and maybe just, you know, where they could put general thoughts down, but have a series of questions that they can um answer and then kind of weed through that and, and maybe get a, a better response in what we've uh, received so far.
Um, thank you Commissioner Holland, I wonder, um, i- i- is it just like a survey type thing that folks go in and do, or maybe?
Yeah, maybe we can, uh sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, yeah, maybe we can talk about it, um, you know, this week or something like that and I can just show you what we just recently did, it's I don't know, if it's new technology, but something that we've recently used, um, and I was surprised that, you know, you, you go to these open houses and you know, you get six, eight people to show up and then all of a sudden you do something online where folks are sitting around, especially during this time and don't have a lot of things to do, but they got a lot of time to think and they can um, you know, uh, provide great comments for uh, development of the community, so anyway, just something to think about.
Great, I'll, I'll uh, get in touch, thank you.
Any other commissioners? All right, Becky, thank you very much for the update and it looks like we'll see you again in, in May, thank you. So the next uh, uh, item on our agenda is a presentation on our work program and I think we go back to Todd for that.
Yeah, uh, thank you very much, uh, Commissioners, I'm Todd Hall again, uh, LDC interim contract planner for the planning department. Uh, thank you, um, we're, uh, I'm, I'm here uh, also with Karen Stewart, who was the environmental planner and historical uh, commission planner for the city and she's uh, graciously put this together uh, for me uh, as well and um she'll be kind of tag-teaming on the discussion as we go through this and um, I'm assuming you all have your packets uh, with you, or I could certainly uh, put, put the item up on the screen if that, if that's easier to follow along to, whatever you prefer.
Todd, maybe if you can put it on the screen and me, for members of the public who might not have, be able to follow, it might, might help.
There we go, okay, can you guys see that, okay?
It's a little small, but yeah, we can see it.
Let's see, how about if I zoom in there?
There you go.
Okay, all right, so um, just to kind of recap it, the beginning of the year or at the end of the year typically, uh, planning uh, commissions are presented. Um, the upcoming work program items for uh, the planning department. And in this case, um, since there was some uh, transition period for the, the planning department, uh, with the departure of Alan and David. Um, we've been working on a number of uh, items to put together on this uh, potential list of work program items and, and I'll preface that by saying that this is a list uh, in flux and dates are uh, to be determined, so I wouldn't get particularly um, stuck on any particular uh, date range. But for the most part, uh, you'll see most of these items um, coming through your way in some capacity throughout twenty-one and then likely into twenty-two, some of these will roll into that. So just working up at the top and, and I'll also mention too is, um, we're, we're still working together. Um, both Clay and I and Karen and Becky are going through uh, some of the items that are on this list. Cause this is kind of an all-encompassing list that deals with not only planning, but other things that are in other departments that may be uh, cooperative of, of these items, so that may include, you know, some public works involvement or parks. Uh, and then of course, the planning uh, department, so there's three buckets. Uh, the first one would be considered your core items and um the second one is kind of, it's listed as intermediate or also mandatory. And then the last one would be discretionary items, of course, there, this is still in flux, we're, we're still flushing out a number of things and there's probably going to be some additional addition or more, more additions to this list. But um, to start off here up at the core one is the comprehensive uh, plan amendment docket. So every year, the commission will see a, a number of items come to you uh, later in the year. That, that docket period, as I understand it, ends in July and then any uh, private initiated or public initiated docket uh, items would be presented uh, to the planning commission, these can include uh, text amendments, map amendments or any other amendments that are proposed by uh, you know, the city council or, or also staff. So that timeframe would be July through December, so that uh, docket opening period um, would be basically from the, from May to July and then those would be presented to you. Um, moving on down next would be the land use code amendments as needed, so like the comp plan map ones, these would be anything initiated in text um, for the development code. And um, those would be both uh, reviewed by the planning commission and the city council. Uh, then moving on down, the next one would be the annual update to the six-year transportation improvement plan or the TIP. So each year, the city is required to uh, update this transportation improvement plan, this is led uh, typically by public works. And I would anticipate that they would be the ones uh, presenting this uh, to the commission uh, to go over those listed transportation projects that are eligible for state and federal funding. And in, in order to, to receive those, the funding dollars, they, they, they must be uh, added to the list uh, on the tip uh, each year. Uh, the next one, uh, this one's a uh, longer-term one, uh, I would consider this one potentially to be in the next category, but that's okay, so the twenty-four uh, growth management comp plan update. Um, that's the next cycle of the uh, major uh, periodic amendments. And so uh, Everett uh, several years ago was involved in their last update. And now we're reaching that next to eight-year cycle, uh, the last ones were around the twenty-fourteen, fifteen timeframe. Um, and now we're uh, just preparing uh, the initial steps uh, to the uh, leading into the comp plan amendment uh, update, so later this year, we'll be starting some uh, discussions with the commission on some of that precursor uh, work that's going to be leading up to the update and most of this will probably start happening in earnest um, at the beginning of twenty-two typically. These comp plan updates, especially the larger ones like this, would take about two to two and a half years, so. Um, and this involves uh, not only the, the cities, but also the county uh, planning policies and buildable lands, which is further down on this list and I'll touch uh, on those. Um, so that, that'll be a significant uh, amount of the commission's work as the, the staff presents um, various elements uh, that need to be updated and those will be presented as they're prepared. Um, rethink housing, so that's uh, the one that Becky uh, presented tonight, so I won't go into too much detail on that, but that's uh, an ongoing uh, project that is uh, well, will last definitely through the summer and possibly into the fall if there's an extension granted from, from, for the, the, the grant dollars. Um, and then uh, like, like uh, Becky mentioned, this includes focus also on transit-oriented development for the future light rail uh, station, uh, that's be, that's coming to Everett and so um, moving on, you know, to, to that discussion, the Sound Transit Everett Link is the, is the next item on the list. And this is a uh, pretty significant project, I'm sure everybody's heard about this for a number of years. Um, just a fact uh, about my history, I was the planning manager for the city of Lenwood for a number of years, uh, working from about twenty-twelve to twenty-nineteen. And uh, we were right in the, the thick of the uh, development of the plan before the, the station now that is fully under construction, I left just prior to the construction. I left just prior to the groundbreaking of that Lynnwood Transit Center. And so now that the train is on its way, so to speak, up to Everett, there's a lot of meetings and briefings and coordination with cities, including Lynnwood and Snohomish County and then Everett. And so our, the staff here, myself included, is helping guide the city staff and then coordinating with Sound Transit. So we've had some initial discussions with a couple of Sound Transit folks and we're anticipating at your next meeting in March, if we can get them scheduled, that they would bring some information to you and provide some updates on that project. One of those components is the operation and maintenance facility for Sound Transit. So if any of you are familiar with down in the Soto District near the stadiums, if you go on the I-90 kind of spur from the, what's now called T-Mobile Park or I guess Lumen Field now, they change names, that there's a, if you look to your right or to the south, there's the main Central Link Operation and Maintenance Facility. And for each of those segments, they need to construct a base, if you will, for trains to sit overnight and do maintenance on. And so for each of the links, which would include the eastern one heading out to Redmond, the southern one heading down to Federal Way, and then of course, the northern one heading up eventually to Everett, there needs to be an OMF facility. Lynnwood was actually initially targeted to have one, but has since been relocated to the Spring District in Bellevue. And so that's currently underway and they'll need to be one sided somewhere up north. That doesn't mean that it's going to be in the City of Everett. It could be in the county, but there needs to be some discussions about that. And so that's to come. It's not been decided yet and there'll be a lot of environmental review and decision making over the course of the next 12 to 18 months and definitely longer. So this is a project that's going to last a good 15 years, 12 to 15 years. We're not expecting opening, I believe, until 2036, if I'm not mistaken. And so there's a lot of planning with that. But we're hoping to get some staff from Sound Transit to you in this next meeting. And then moving on to the next one, this, these first couple items, that folds into the Comp Plan or the Periodic Update. This would be the Countywide Planning Policies. That's currently happening right now at the county level. And so they're going, they're meeting and discussing with the local jurisdictions on amending their countywide planning policies based on the newly adopted Puget Sound Regional Council or PSRC Vision 2050, which is the multi-county regional plan. So the multi-county planning policies, the Snohomish County planning policies and the cities all need to be consistent. And so they're all going to be working with the local comp plans like Everett's to then be interlinked and then that'll be presented as a briefing with the Planning Commission. There won't be any formal action, but once that, that's probably going to be adopted here in the next four to five months, sometime in late spring or early summer. Buildable Lands Analysis, this looks at the land capacity for, in each jurisdiction, whether it's new development or redevelopment. So this is working with a gentleman, Steve Toy at the county. He's their demographer, also works with the GIS group to identify those particular parcels within each jurisdiction that would potentially be chosen or a good candidate for redevelopment or is vacant and could be redeveloped or those parcels that are impacted by critical areas, steep slopes and the like. So this will also be a briefing to the Planning Commission, but both the CPPs and the BLLR, Buildable Lands Analysis, is going to be interlinked with that Comp Plan Update. Then the Housing Action Plan, that's been discussed by Becky, so I won't go into that one. And then these last two ones, I'll have Karen talk about at least the last one, the Smith Island, since she's been heavily involved in that one. And then the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, we just had a meeting with staff today, just as a coordination meeting that is part of the Parks Plan work that they're doing with the update of the Prose Plan, which is going to be finished in mid 22. This has to be also interlinked with the Comp Plan. It'll be adopted by reference, but there's a lot of correlation between the goals and policies in that plan as well as the Parks and Recreation Element of the main comprehensive plan. So that's what we were discussing today. And you may see the Parks Department at some point come and do a briefing. There won't be any formal action on that one. And then Karen, if you wouldn't mind taking over the last item here regarding Smith Island, that would be great.
Sure. Yes. This is Karen Stewart, Environmental Planner. I guess one thing to add about the Parks Prose Plan, having worked on the last iteration, they update the plan every five years in order to be eligible for grant monies from the state. And so they typically have a consultant team who helps with that effort. And just to remind you why that's not coming to the Planning Commission is because the city has a Parks Board. And so the Prose Plan goes through the Parks Board and then goes to the City Council. Regarding annexations, this was just mentioned as tentative here, where our Utilities Division of Public Works regarding the wastewater treatment facility, the pond, treatment ponds north of the facility now, there's a possibility for future expansion that they will need more acreage. And right now, the city limits coincide with our municipal urban growth area on Smith, on the, this portion of Smith Island to the east of I-5. And so there may be a need, because this is an essential public facility as a municipal wastewater treatment plant, to work through the Snohomish County tomorrow process and during this updates of comp plans to extend the city's municipal urban growth area further to the north to allow future annexations. This is just in some preliminary discussions right now. There's no formal application yet.
Did we lose someone's audio here?
Oh, can you guys hear me now?
Oh, now we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, it looks like my audio cut off. Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, what I was just going to wrap up with is I was just going to show this screen, hopefully you guys can still see that, is how this interlinks with the Comp Plan Update. So as I mentioned, you have the Buildable Lands Report that talks about sufficient suitable land within the city's current identified UGA urban growth area for that forecasted residential, commercial, industrial growth. And then the CPPs or Countywide Planning Policies that is currently under development and will be available later this year. And then what I didn't mention is the 2044 Growth Targets. This identifies population employment, excuse me, and housing targets for the 24 to 44. And this is negotiated between Snohomish County and all the cities. So a city like Everett, which is a core city for the county, and then you've also had larger cities like Bothell and Lynnwood, and then you have all the other smaller cities categorized. Everett by its size is going to have its growth targets. And then just going through the Comp Plan Policy Review and then the Compliance Review as part of the update, the Department of Commerce as part of GMA or Growth Management Act, you have to make sure that the Comp Plan and the Development Regulations are consistent. And so they have a checklist that they provide each jurisdiction to go through and review that with their staff and make sure you've got everything checked off. Also involved is the State Environmental Policy Act or SEPA. So the city would assess the plan and make sure that there's no significant impacts from the last update. And then lastly, on this bottom column here, you've got the other plans that are interlinked in some way, the Transportation Element Update or the TIP. And then you've also got the Parks and Recreation Element Update and also the Prose Plan that fits in here. And then the CFP or Capital Facilities and Utilities Element. And this is looking at not only the city's infrastructure, but also the utility companies that, like PUD, that would be influence on future decision making too. So that is all that we had had to present tonight. So if anyone has any questions on any specific item or just general questions, we'd be able to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It looks like Commissioner Finch has a question.
I've got two questions, actually. Thanks. First, back in 2019 and possibly early 2020, the staff had provided some updates as to entitlements and building starts on a periodic basis. And I was wondering if we could do that again. I think it's informative for us to understand the new developments that are being explored in Everett and how that's going. And the other question I had was, was about the Everett Station area. I understand there's some master planning going on around the station and I wasn't sure if the city was involved in that or if that was a third party that's leading that, but it just strikes me that it's relevant to some of the things you discussed this evening.
Yeah, and forgive me because my role is relatively new with the city and assisting, so I haven't been too terribly involved with your folks' link and that segment. But I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, but I believe the Economic Development Director, Dan Ernesti, he's been involved in some capacity with that information. But I also know that Sound Transit, you know, staff likely would have some additional information on that as well.
Great, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? Commissioner Laubra?
Yes, you mentioned, Todd mentioned that our next meeting was in March. Are we not anticipating a second meeting in February?
Yeah, as of right now, we don't have any agenda items for the next meeting in February. So we're, just to give enough time for staff to prepare the agenda and also to ensure that we can have the best possibility to get some Sound Transit folks at that meeting. We're anticipating the March meeting for that. So we just contacted them, I believe, either this morning or yesterday. So we want to make sure that they're able to attend that meeting and having it in a couple of weeks is probably too short notice.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions? So I'm not sure if there's any members of the public who had comments or input on anything that was presented here. Perhaps Kathy, you could run through.
That logged in after our housing conversation, Mr. Mohammed, would you like to speak?
No, thank you. I'm, I'm good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That would be... Mr. Harris, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Victor Harris. Well, considering light rail and maintenance facilities, can anybody answer what the noise level is at the facilities currently in use? And are there any, are any of these facilities in residential neighborhoods or near residential neighborhoods? I've been around UP and BNSF rail yards and I know that their noise can carry for a long distance. There's something about how metal rattles and such. And along with that, if there's much shifting of trains all day long while these things are being done, or if it's just sort of park a work on for eight hours and then put them back in service. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for your questions. Those are great, great questions. In terms of the noise and the operate, the overall operations, I'm not the best one to answer that and I'll probably want to defer that to the staff, the Sound Transit staff, once they, you know, attend a meeting. And hopefully, like I said, that'll be at our March, first March meeting. Regarding the location of the facilities, the only one that's in current operation as of today is located in Soto or South Downtown of Seattle. And if you know that location that I was describing earlier, next to the stadiums, that's all industrial or commercial properties, as far as I'm aware. And I've been there, through there many times. I don't think there's any housing in the immediate vicinity. Now, with that said, it's just directly north is the International District. And, but that's, that's still several, you know, blocks, maybe about a half a mile, quarter mile at the closest to that station. With, in terms of the Bellevue one that's being constructed, it's called the Spring District, and that's a mixed use area. I'm not 100% certain how close the housing is to that, but that, again, is another sort of mixed use, light industrial, used to traditionally be a light industrial area for a long time. If you're familiar with, you know, just to the east of downtown Bellevue, you had the old Coca-Cola bottling plant, the old Safeway Distribution Center, and a lot of those uses have since been demolished and now it's being rebuilt with a lot of tech companies like Facebook and whatnot. But that OMF facility was cited there. In terms of, you know, when Lynnwood, since I worked there, I could give you a feedback on that, is they originally wanted to site it at the, what is now the new operations and maintenance facility for the Edmund School District or what we know of as called as the Bus Barn. That is, that's directly across the street from existing single family. And when it got when that Sound Transit wanted to put in the OMF facility there, you can imagine what became of that. And there was a lot of vocal citizens and there was enough support to basically, you know, quote unquote, move that or kick that facility out of Lynnwood. And it was then decided that Bellevue was the more appropriate location for that. So I think they've kind of, you know, not speaking for Sound Transit, but they've kind of learned a few lessons from that past experience on citing. And I would imagine that they'll be taking those into consideration for the new one. But like I said, where that's going to be located, whether it's in the county's jurisdiction or within the city's jurisdiction, it's too early to tell because they have to do their due diligence and environmental reviews. They're going to go through what's called various alternatives. And that includes the routing because there's And, um, that includes the, the routing because they're still determining the exact route of the, the light rail, um, line itself, but that hasn't been a hundred percent decision. They, they, they've released enough information to give the public an idea. But in terms of the hundred percent decision on the route and the O M F facility, those decisions haven't been made yet. So hopefully that, that gives you some context.
Thank you, Todd. Did we have anyone else? Kathy on the line that you could see?
No, they're, they've left. The other two left, so.
Okay, perfect. Any, uh, additional questions or comments from commissioners?
I think I did want to echo, um, Commissioner Finch's, um, note about kind of the usefulness. I think in the past of the, we've been advised about, uh, giving some updates on, um, different hous- housing starts and, and different projects that have, have come up i- in, in going on in the city. And some, some update on that, I think maybe in the context of when we're talking, at some point we talked about the, the growth targets, uh, that may be relevant. But I do think, uh, some information about that was very helpful in the past to kind of help put a lot of things in context to, to get kind of an overview of, of things that have been going on in the city and, and where we're at. So that would just be something I would, um, would echo as, as having been helpful in the past.
Yeah, oh, that's great. And Karen and I can, can coordinate with the current planning staff and get a list of those, um, projects and maybe, uh, present those at your next, um, upcoming meeting.
Thank you. Any other, um, before we wrap up here, any final questions or comments from, from commissioners? Okay, well, thank you, Todd, staff. Um, thank you, commissioners. I think with that, um, we will conclude item three on the agenda. And unless there's anything else for the good of the order, one, one last opportunity here. All right, with that, thank you, and we will adjourn the meeting. Good night.
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 Good night, all.
Thanks.
Night.
Night.